All right. Hey, welcome to the Church Digital Podcast. Jeff here, founder of the Church Digital. We're doing a podcast recording, a live stream, and today, May 20th, is our summer Town Hall meeting. I'm excited. I love the Town Hall. You see, look, we even got our little signage right there in the background. Town Hall is gonna be really cool. So, we do this thing, we do it every, you know, three, four times a year, maybe once a quarter. Really is a chance to listen to you, to get out there and to directly interface with digital missionaries and people like you that are out in the field. And so, I sent a survey around earlier, trying to collect information from you, and many of you contributed. We had over 50 people, 50, 60 people globally contribute to this thing, but some of you did not get a chance to. And so, during the presentation, I want to ask you to go ahead and present. By the way, we've got a lot of chat and some things are happening. So, I'm gonna do like two things at the same time. First off, here is a little QR code. Go ahead and zap that QR code with your phone and get set up. I'm using Menti, M-E-N-T-I. It's a great platform. I use it for presentations like this. And so, the survey, the questions, you'll be able to interact with it in real time. If you already voted earlier, great, thank you. Go ahead and zap it again because there's questions I didn't ask you because shh, there's some things that we're secretly going to announce in today's stream that I hadn't announced earlier. And so, I want your feedback on that. So, if you did the survey, go ahead and fill it out. If you didn't do the survey, ah, go ahead and fill it, you know, jump on this thing and we'll go through it. Chat is blowing up, always excited about that. Our friend Flatcap, I still have no idea what these emojis mean. I don't speak this. JMo, excited. JMo's excited. There's a reason JMo's excited. We'll get into that here a little bit. Melanie, the great Melanie. Without Melanie, the entire Church Digital ecosystem would crash and burn. I'm not even exaggerating from that. Simon is making me jealous from Poland. He and I were WhatsApping earlier today. I want to go to Poland. Simon, is it always in Poland? He's at a conference right now and he's convincing me to go to Poland. So, I'm excited about exploring Poland. And evidently, Tom is jealous of Simon in Poland. Like, let's just establish right now, meh, that is number one speak for I'm jealous. Shelter in, I guess that means it's cold in Poland or I'm not sure, but that's about, we still got sanitizer. I don't even know. Flatcap, I wish the software that I was using spoke your language, Flatcap, but you're in a different world. Sylvan, logging in from Willows, California. Hey Sylvan, how you doing? Judy as well coming in from Southern SoCal. Very, very cool there. Simon. Tariq, you know, from Pakistan, the Middle East. So excited. Tariq is, well, I mean, shoot, he launched Equipping Digital Missionaries in Pakistan in the middle of like, war-torn Pakistan as it's in the middle of a war with India, or maybe it's being centered, I'm not sure of the political situation. But man, so excited, Tariq. Thanks for jumping on here. Excited about that. Emule, Joel coming on as well. The real Andy Mage. So many coming in. May want to bring down the music just a slight bit. Are we still too loud? Are we still too loud? Bueller, Bueller, of course, right when I said that, it faded it out. Okay. All right, Andy, I'll go ahead and do it. Thank you for the feedback. I appreciate it. You know, if it's too old, if you're too old, if it's too loud, if it's too loud, you're too old. What's the saying? How's that go? I'm, Andy, I'm not applying that to you. I wouldn't dare apply that to you. That's, they're talking about somebody else. Ian checking in, Paul, Micah, man, this is so good. You and your secrets. Man, I always got secrets. And I like it better when we can't hear Jeff. Thank you, Whitebeard. I missed you, my friend. I'm glad Whitebeard's, Whitebeard's coming back around. You know, we're starting to, he had the new job and kind of got a little hectic. Multi-site director for multiple campuses, new guy in town, trying to elevate the game, get some standards. He was a little busy. Oh my gosh, so many people. Scott coming on, Micah, Kiwi from New Zealand, Tom, I don't even know what shots were fired. What shots? Andy, I like it better when I can't hear Jeff. Okay, that was, that was, you know, I, Andy, should I send Tom to his room? You know, Whitebeard, I'm just gonna tell you, like, unless you behave, I'm gonna make sure you're on Santa's naughty list. I mean, technically, you are Santa. So, would you just go ahead, Whitebeard, and put your own name on your own list? Like, I think, I think that's best in this moment. Yeah, 900 leaders, Simon, from all over Europe right now. 900 church leaders, excited about the European Leadership Summit, something, sounds like an incredible opportunity for the future. And it's warm. Not Miami warm. It was so funny. I walked into, I had breakfast this morning with Jesse Carbo because Jesse may be on here. But I, literally, I was walking into a hotel, there's a Starbucks in the hotel lobby, and that's just where Jesse and I meet. And, and this guy was walking out with a suitcase, walking out of the hotel. And literally, like, he is soaking wet, five, 15 feet away from the door, just sweat, drenching, bald guy, clean shave, white shirt. You can already see through it. And he walks past me and he literally says, I'm outside 15 seconds and I'm already on fire. Just, it was so funny, this poor guy. Welcome to Miami. Brian Phipps in the house. Brian, Kansas City, great to see you, man. Brian texted me this morning and it's just an encouraging note, hey man, I'm praying for you. And it was the right text at the right moment. And so, Brian, so good to see you. Man, Sly coming in. We got Nigeria coming in, Yatope. Oh, Jesse Velez. Jesse, I was talking about you actually with Jesse Carbo earlier today. We still gotta get together. Looking forward to doing that at some point. Keegan, the QR code seems to just go to a way to ask you questions, not a form. Yeah, 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 yeah. I will get to the, you are faster than me, Keegan. Just keep that webpage open. I didn't properly set it up. My fault. Thank you, Keegan, for making me aware of my issues. So, we're gonna get to a second here after I, you know, stall and give you an opportunity to answer the questions. Man, there's so much chat. We just, we gotta roll through some of this stuff. So, you know what? Let's just go ahead and get started. So, here's what we did. The first question, where are you from? And so, the survey, 56 people surveyed. Hey, about 27 of them, half of the people surveyed were in the United States. Now, we also got a bunch in Europe. We got some down in Asia, Australia, some in Africa, none in South America. I want to call attention to that. We still have yet to actually crack the South America, but I want to bring my mouse right over here. Dude, we got a digital missionary in Antarctica. I don't know who you are or what penguins you're using to share Jesus over down in South, in Antarctica. No, maybe somebody misclicked. I don't know. If you're really from Antarctica and doing digital missions, talk about remote. I told Jesse Carbo this morning, I was like, dude, I want to like move to friggin Puerto Rico, where it's like, you know, five bucks to live and go be a digital missionary just remotely from Puerto Rico. I'm actually not kidding when I say that. But could you imagine, like, living in a tent, in a camp, a base camp down in like Antarctica, doing digital missions work? If you are, if you are, if you have not contributed to the survey, zap the QR code and go ahead and contribute to the survey. I want to legitimately tell you here, all right? We use this material. We use this survey to feed what the Church Digital is doing in the future. This is a major part of us discovering and praying through and figuring out what the direction is. The Digital Missionary Conference is directly related to this stuff that happened fall of, to the Town Hall meeting. We did fall of '24, I guess, somewhere around there. And so, you know, contribute to the, zap it in and let us know where you're at. Man, there's so much stuff. Ed A. coming in. Good to see you, my friend. Antarctica is a great location to pick with your VPN. Maybe that's it. Maybe somebody, no, 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 but like, you, you know, they actually had to click the thing, not automated on this one. But that's good, that's good, that's good, that's good. All right. Number two, kind of hyped up, man. I'm excited about the stuff we're gonna get into. Favorite platform or community? Favorite platform or community? Number one is WhatsApp. Not really that surprised by that. I was expecting WhatsApp in there. Number two. Facebook, really, y'all? Facebook? 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 Like, I keep, I keep trying to like get this platform killed and you can see like new stuff's coming in in the time and it's adjusting. But, but Facebook? All right. So, if you're out there watching us right now, I'm gonna call you out publicly. If Facebook is your favorite platform, here's what I need you to do. I need you to go to facebook.com/bethchurchdigital. Facebook.com/bethchurchdigital and go follow us on Facebook. We get, I'm not exaggerating here. We get crickets on Facebook, which is why we pour all our energy into WhatsApp and Discord. So, if you really like Facebook, you gotta engage with us on Facebook. And if you're really passionate about Facebook, hit me up directly. I may give you the keys to Facebook. I saw this come up. I was expecting WhatsApp. I was expecting Discord. I was expecting social media. And there's another, a smattering of different platforms that came in. All of that is. Big screen, of course. Mr. Pete is coming in. Mr. Pete, I just see this, you know, big screen. Of course, Mr. Pete's passionate about big screen. Love you, sir. Don't worry, Facebook is trying to kill Facebook. They keep making it worse. All right, we're gonna move on. But seriously, if you are passionate about Facebook, you are missing your calling. We, the Church Digital, are missing your calling. Come let us know and we'll get you a place. You are a, question number three, you are a digital missionary, you are a church staff employee, you are a missions organization employee, you are a normie, you're a normal person, or other. I don't know what other could be. I guess other could be alien. I guess other could be a penguin from Antarctica. I don't know what other is, but figure it out. And so, you're seeing here, we've got 40%, by far the majority, claim to be quote-unquote digital missionaries. Now, there's opportunity to do both. So, a digital missionary that also works for a church staff, a digital missionary that also works for a missions organization. It's interesting, 14% of people surveyed in this thing are like, yeah, I'm just, I'm just some guy. I'm just some gal. I love that. I mean, that's, that really is this, this normie language. We used to, you know, previously in past years, I want to bring back the normie language. We used to have normies all of the time and talk about that. Used to, you know, joke on that we were like the, yeah, what was it? The, oh my gosh, Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer? The island of misfit toys from the show. Yeah, I used to joke like that was us, you know, Micah. Micah coming in from the outside saying he is all of the above. And yeah, well, Micah, I don't know how normal. No, I'm kidding. I'm not gonna do that to you. All right. I like you, Micah, unlike Whitebeard, who's giving me crap. So, next up, this is interesting. Recent missionary success stories, recent missionary success stories. Now, let me, let me work some magic here. Oh, that was the wrong button. Shoot, that was not what I wanted to do. Close Q and A. All right. Recent missionary success stories. Well, I think I'm supposed to press spacebar, hit the wrong button. All right, here you go. That was my fault. Online outreach. So, let's click this and drill in. Here's some success stories that you all are sharing. Trained 1,600 people, 16,000 people at a young persons conference to take a step of faith to share their faith in the digital world. Someone who engaged primarily online, visited a physical location to be baptized. I love mission, I love the mission work, but I really appreciate the effort on using Facebook group to share the gospel with people. My team went on a village outreach during Good Friday in April in, yeah, in Nigeria. Daily text and email devotions, working on a YouTube channel. We successfully connected a small new association of Christian video game creators and streamers with an international mission focused on evangelizing, discipling, and inspiring youth. Man, it's cool. Like, I almost, I want to, maybe as a blog, I want to post some of these stories, but excited about what's happening at the on-reach level, at the online outreach level. Success stories, I'm seeing Jesus transforms lives, personal transformation through his calling and blessing in a biblical peacemaking. Whether the controversies are large or small, hearts soften with path steps to peace. Lives are being transformed. Connected online with something talking about life, not living. I'm guessing that's not something, but someone. Talk, texted over weeks, eventually came to church and got baptized. I'm going around Asia for my farewell tour of all my missions work there in mission trips. I made plenty of friends over the years and this is my last time they see my face in person. But you'll get to see them digitally and engage with them digitally. Hey Cindy, Cindy just coming in. How you doing, Cindy? Good to see you. So, excited about some of those stories. Oh, I gotta, sorry, I'm clicking on the wrong screen. Let's do, let's do virtual reality. I am very active in virtual reality in a program called Big Screen. Oh, I'm screwing with that. Don't do that. That was bad. In Big Screen, hey, hey, it's Mr. Pete. Last week, I held a team of missionaries through LaZon. I led a team through the LaZon Virtual Lounges. They were avatars for the first time and would like to implement a virtual world for their mission. Talking about exposing and exploring new ideas. Got some new ones coming here. I'm new to the Digital Missionary Initiative, doing some hybrid missions with a former believer. By sharing our testimony, launching as digital missionaries, another couple that feels called wants to meet and discuss how they might be able to do the same. Like, it's beautiful. First off, it's beautiful to see life change happen, be able to make those connections, where you're able to have those conversations, you see people get baptized or take some steps of faith or grow closer to God, closer to Christ, in some level. But it's also is beautiful to help someone that maybe knows Jesus have a better understanding of what it means to disciple someone, not just to conversion, but to develop them to a closer place in Christ, so that they're living a life of obedience as well. And so, if you haven't shared your stories yet, feel free to zip, zap the QR code and share your story in that. I've got like 25 screens open, windows on my, it is so confusing right now. Let me, I'm gonna get this one out of the way. That's gonna help me move forward here a little bit. All right, next up, your biggest challenge today. Right up off the top of the bat, feel free to, you know, share what you have in there. Two biggest challenges, time and money. Now, it's interesting, you know, the way this is actually set up is you actually have to type the word. And all of you typed different words. And so, it is what it is. Like, you can see fundraising. You can see not enough hands for time, fundraising for money. You can see all sorts of different objects that are centered around. Move to connect to community, needing a mentor or group training. There is a lot of that in there as well. And so, we're gonna talk here some about maybe some equipping things that are coming up. But definitely excited for the feedback. There on that, let's get into this. Equipping Digital Missionaries. Speaking of, our online digital missionary course, Equipping Digital Missionaries, so creatively named, is number one, awesome. I love it and it was a great. I took it and it was awesome. Number two, I think it's awesome. We'll take it soon. Number three, meh, wasn't that interested in it. And number four, what you talking about, Willis? Maybe not that aggressive. But here, that's the scores. A lot of people seem to think it was awesome. A lot of people are awesome, like interested in taking it. For what it's worth, we've had maybe 75 people graduate through Equipping Digital Missionaries. I haven't done the country count yet on it, but I would speculate it's probably 30 to 40 countries that have taken EDM successfully. Lot of global representation coming in. We've had close to 300 people register for more information and are wanting to do it when schedules align and things like that. So, there is a huge interest in digital missionaries. And so, those of you that are thinking it's awesome, we need to flip the switch and get you connected into it. I don't know, we've got four or five cohorts going right now, a couple in Americas, one in Africa, one in the Middle East, one up in Germany. Europe is launching, I think, in a couple of weeks as well. So, excited to see what's coming out of EDM. Here's a good one for me. I wish the Church Digital would, and this is where we are, you know, looking. How can we help you? How can we help you? Now, there's a bunch of, I'm new, I'll reserve judgment for later. I'm really new and so far, it looks good. Really new, don't have advice, no suggestions. I love it. And so, there's, can I see, can I see it in the Google Play Store? Sure, with a web browser. You know, this is great. I wish the Church Digital will spread like wildflower, wildfire, wildfire. Is that the name of like a superhero or a transformer or something? Will spread like wildfire. I hope you're right, my friend. I don't know who said that, but that's really good. By the way, I don't have any names on any of these. All these are, you know, private. It's clean data coming in. Some of you want a technology training. Train me on modern, that's why that's not working. Train me on modern technology of doing digital missions in mobilization. I have two channels, blah, blah, blah. Help me, help the digital missionaries with more training and encouraging people to reach out to the unreached people groups using Facebook or WhatsApp would really, would expand more into virtual reality. It's a good one. Will expose me to modern technology of doing digital missions in social media platforms. Be a completely, I'm guessing this one's about the Digital Missionary Conference. Be a completely understandable course with great breakouts. Depending upon who you are, I don't know what completely understandable is, but I get this. This is a good one. I wish the Church Digital and it gives some content, diversity. Work and make content, content's important. It's not the end game, but content is important. Work and make content based on the age differences, like teenagers, adults, and youth. Different content for different people from the Church Digital. All right, slow golf clap. That is really good. To be honest, that's one of the things that's my heart right now. Like, I'm a, I'm an old bald, I'm not as old as Steve Reid. Let's set that aside. But I'm an old bald man. Hey, Stephen, I know you're watching on demand. Just thought I'd throw that at you. I'm an old bald man with a beard. Like, this is not the face of a Gen A and Gen Z movement. And so, we need to find, we need to connect with, and we need to empower some of these people to grab the reins, men and women. It's one of the reasons we're so passionate about leaning into nationalities, to lean into their cultures, to give Simon, to give Yatope, to give Tariq, to give them a platform to reach into their spaces. But in addition to that, you know, women, age differences as well, different cultures based on age, like, we, the Church Digital, need to be leaning into that, helping others and platforming others towards that. Another one, make teams in different areas to produce content in their local language and have a strong follow-up plan to measure progress and consistency. Target-based work will be efficient and results-driven. Yeah, that's, we are, we're in the early stages of that. As a matter of fact, Equipping Digital Missionaries, EDM, for the first time, was taught in German. Simon would literally just did that. He's wrapping up that first cohort this week, next week, where we used AI to translate the subtitles into German. Now, to be honest, that's a short-term solution for me. The long-term solution, and Simon knows this, is I want Simon to, you know, recruit a team and let's actually record it in German. Like, I don't think it's a win for 40, 50 videos to be in English taught by a bunch of American, you know, guys. I would love to see better representation. Subtitles may work well, but globally, I would love to see better representation on some of these. There should be different genres as well with different presentations, like whiteboard animation with voiceover, vlogs, short films. But there should be a hierarchy to lead projects. It's not a bad idea. Some of that's budget and some of that's an issue right now. But yeah, I love the way you're thinking. It should be good to categorize what you offer, how the Church Digital, digital missionaries, can help various different areas of ministry. That's feedback too. We're gonna come back, come back, come back to that one here in a second. Let me see, was there anything else I wanted to cover on this slide as we're 30 minutes in? International, not so American-centric. Like, I want to publicly acknowledge that one. Yeah, we need to move away from that. Be sustainable. We need stability. I want to represent that one. I would love that. That was actually one of the topics of breakfast this morning. Connect with other networks to see the opportunities and gaps and collaborate to get the world done. Help visualize and organize digital mission partnerships in international movements. I, that's my heart. Is to see not the Church Digital brand in global space. Actually, I told that to leadership today. You know, we don't, I want to help empower others to connect into digital environments and physical and digital space globally. Like, it's not, you know, if Jeff had an opportunity to speak globally, I would, I would love to empower somebody else to speak globally. It's not, you know, God didn't ask me to launch jeffreeda.com. He helped, he asked me to launch the Church Digital. And so, I think that was it. Hey, there's gonna be some questions from the audience. At the end of this thing, we're gonna do a Q and A. And so, let's go ahead. You can click the Q and A button, I believe on the screen. It's this little over here on the side. I think that's it, like the little chat bubbles. If you've got questions as we're going through this, we'll address everything at the end as we have time. But I do want to do this. I want to, I want to talk a little bit. Because not only do we want to hear from you, and this, there were some really good things that came out of this, these conversations today and the stuff that you shared and will share. But there's some things that we've heard in the past and that we've seen in the past that we've been working on developing and that we're wanting to roll out here very soon, including four digital missionary conferences, not one, not two, not three, but four digital missionary conferences coming up here in a little bit. And so, but to get to there, we're gonna, we're gonna like roll into it. So, you gotta stick around for the missionary conferences. We're gonna talk about the framework for the Church Digital. Connect, community, equip, mobilize. If you've been listening to us, if you've been checking into EDM, if you've been hanging out with us for any length of time, you've heard me talk about this, you know, a deep cut is gonna be, you've seen my friend Funko Pop DaVinci and talk about the flywheel. Connect, community, equip, mobilize, and how that works in digital missions. We're connecting via content, via social media, via YouTube. Community, you know, we tend to lean towards asynchronous community, but synchronous and asynchronous work together, WhatsApp, Discord. Community for us is building relationships, establishing trust. To be honest, the outpost is what you're gonna start to see, really, community start to foster. We're gonna talk more about outposts here in a little bit. Equipping, you know, you've seen the Equipping Digital Missionary cohorts come up here within the past six months or so. And then mobilization, this is where we encourage, we experiment, we empower ministry to happen at a global level, helping you find what you're called to and then mobilizing you, holding you accountable, releasing you and helping you do what God is calling you to do in digital space. And that's, that's a beautiful challenge. Now, 2024 was the year of connection and community. This is where we made leaps and bounds and leaps and jumps, whatever the saying is, on connection and community, on that social media, on the brand. Barbara's team, Word Revolution, came in and really grabbed the ball and ran with it on that connection, on the top level. And Barbara's team, Ingrid and everybody else involved in that has done and will continue to do an incredible job towards that. If you're looking for that type of stuff, Word Revolution is absolutely unbelievable. WordRevolution.com. At the same time, Andy Mage shifted from connection to community. Community is Andy's sweet spot. And he really, we launched, you know, we launched Discord last year. We launched WhatsApp last year. Discord's floating around 700. WhatsApp is 515, 525, I think. And so, like, we've gotten community going very fast digitally. And 2024 was really the building of that. Now, 2025 looks a little different. This is where my friend Jason Morris starts to sweat a little bit because 25 is the year of equipping. We launched, really, we graduated the first class of Equipping Digital Missionaries, our cohort. In 25, we did Beta 1. In 24, 25, we did Beta 2 entirely in 25. We're working on Beta 3 right now in 25. And like I said, 75 people probably graduated from this thing from across the planet and so excited about it. But it's so interesting to me where the first EDM1 was 13 weeks and the 13-week cohort dragged a little bit. Like, if we're honest, it was, it was a little slow. It was a little long. It got hurt by some holidays in there too. But we came out with the 10-week one and we said, okay, let's streamline it. Let's cut it down to like 10 weeks. This, and I taught, I taught the 10-week one to like four or five cohorts at the same time, which was awesome. And but as we're going through it, here's an observation that I will give you, direct from the people who were in Beta 2 with me. And, but as we were going through it, here's an observation that I will give you, direct from the people who were in beta two with me. The, um, Gen, Gen, uh, the Gen Z and, and the younger millennials, this is way too long, Jeff. Like this thing needs to get down at like four to five weeks. The boomers and the Gen Xers, dude, Jeff, man, ten weeks is perfect. We, we need longer. Like it was so funny to hear the, the different perspectives, mostly centered around age. And so this is what we're doing. We're actually launching an EDM core. We're in the process. Jason Morris is working on this. This is some of the stuff that's coming soon. Uh, but we're, we're going to be launching a, a four to five-week core group of, uh, cohort for equipping digital missionaries. Now, like you're, what you're seeing on this slide was actually our thirteen-week. Last time we did a town hall meeting, like, I don't know, three, six months ago, maybe I showed this in the spring. I think I showed this in, in, in January. It was this thirteen-week and we're boiling this down. Yeah, Jason Morris, no pressure at all, dude. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I am literally burning the ship by saying this, Jason Morris, on, on you publicly. So you got it. He's, he's gonna nail us, but we're gonna, we're gonna boil it down. We're gonna shrink it down to, um, to, to the limited time. Now, I'm, I'm just gonna pick out here. Number seven on, on here, on, on this little, this sheet here, digital imperialism. This is my favorite, by far my favorite, um, course. Digital imperialism is, is gonna get cut. It's, it's not gonna make it in, into a five-week. And, and you know, fundraising is probably gonna get cut just because, because of the length of it. But by cutting it, now it's the number one issue that you have as digital missionaries. So, so we're cutting it to make it smaller and simpler, but by cutting it, we're not actually helping you with the stuff that you're interested in or, or, or like in digital imperialism, stuff that you need to know in order to be effective at, at, at a global level. And so how are we going to handle this situation? How do we shrink EDM, equipping digital missionaries, the only, the only course, the only cohort that we're providing in equipping, yet still effectively equip you to handle these issues that you're, you're facing? Ladies and gentlemen, I give to you the TCD equipping library. Well, this is actually a University of Florida GIF. Do I say GIF or is it JIF? I think I should say, I want to say JIF, but everybody's gonna get mad at me and say GIF. Um, but the, the heart of this is GIF or JIF aside, we are going to create a equipping library. Uh, aside from equipping digital missionaries where our outposts will be able to provide equipping and training on a number of, um, resources, on a number of topics. Like for example, the, the course, my favorite section that digital imperialism will be available as, as a course. Uh, and, and talking about how digital culture is stronger than physical culture when you're doing digital mission work. Really interesting stuff. And so like that is, uh, that'll be available, not probably as part of EDM, but available uh, after the fact for people to go through on the side. And, and like in topics with fundraising, we're actually in the process of, of talking with our friends over at Reliant about them, Reliant actually creating an online course as part of our equipping library so that you can get trainings, uh, to help you be better at fundraising. And, and so like some of the stuff that we're going to do is we're really going to look at, hey, what are equipping digital missionaries struggling with? And, 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 and help develop trainings to solve those problems. And, and if we don't have the answer, there's this really, um, eclectic group of missions, organizations and ministry partners that would love to help digital missionaries. And so we are going to start to lean into equipping digital missionaries, not just through the cohort, but through our outpost overall on a broad range of topics. So look for equipping digital missionaries. I'm, I'm once again, Jason, no pressure, my friend. You're, we're gonna see more of uh, the TCD equipping library sometime, uh, this fall. Now, to do that, this is just a fun little tidbit. To do that, we are, uh, we're exploring an LMS, a full learning, um, uh, learning management system, LMS, learning module system, learning module system, I think. And so, uh, we were exploring, uh, Nobi. Nobi was, this is like a, this, uh, town hall was paid for you in part by, uh, the fun people over at Nobi. No, but this is a somewhat of a commercial. The Nobi, they're friends. And so we're exploring that platform. You can check them out at nobi.com. Um, I'm not sure they're gonna work, but it's the, it's the best guest walking in to, uh, the town hall today. So enjoy that slide right there. Now, here's what I want from you. Grab your phones, open up web browsers, zap the QR code. Hopefully you still got it open. I wish I had more training in. I wish I had more training in. I want to see what you wish you had more training in. Would love to see some things pop up. Now, there is probably some sort of a delay uh, between, um, uh, where I'm broadcasting this night, so it's gonna take time. So I'm gonna stall here for a second. Um, okay, I just saw this pop up in chat. Uh, Vader, Luke, you don't know the power of the digital side. Digital imperialism. I totally get the joke. I've been watching, I've been watching, I have not watched indoor season two yet. No, no spoilers. I was waiting for my wife to, to get out of, she's, she's a school teacher. This is her last week of school. And so she would have been mad at me if I watched it without her. She really, she really liked it. And, uh, and so I haven't caught up with it, but I appreciate that, Methos. And, and then Evangel, the Republic will be reorganized into the first digital empire. Oh, oh, so good. Alright, some, some feedback is coming in. I wish I had more training in micro church. I wish I had, uh, more training in discipling people in my network, in my neighborhood. I'm gonna just assume something there. Uh, Andy Mage says Andor season two is a masterpiece. I, I caught it. I caught part of a conversation online. Does this make Andor one of the top five most important people in the Star Wars universe? When that was said, I was like, oh my, like that, that's a whole level of importance. And, and so I'm excited for it. By the way, drinking out of my, um, Starbucks Mustafar, Mustafar, excuse me, coffee mug as, as I'm doing this is decaf. It's way past my, uh, my, my coffee timeline date, but so good. Alright, so hey, listen, I, I can't, I can't stall too much longer. Gotta keep moving. But, um, that we will make these, um, trying to figure out, we will make these slides available again after EDM is over, after the town hall is over. And so we'll post the, the link where you'll be able to vote again. Uh, the link will be the church dot digital slash poll, but you'll have access to the presentation, all of this. You'll be able to go in there and, and vote through it. So check the, check the communities. We'll continue the conversation. Um, uh, hey, uh, can somebody paste the URL for the questions? I'm, I'm tuning in from my phone, so can't scan the code. Yeah, it's, uh, thechurch.digital/poll, P-O-L-L. Somebody can type that in. I guess I can. I mean, no reason I can't. Um, but seriously, what is digital imperialism? Alright, I'll tell you. You know what? Well, I was about to say, you'd have to go take, uh, equipping digital missionaries. Imperialism. You know what? Cultural differences just popped up on my screen. Scott. Cultural differences is the reason. Imperialism is a term in history where, um, you know, Rome takes over the world and, and all of a sudden Rome forces its culture on everybody else. Uh, England takes over our friends in, uh, Australia and, and for India. India is a better example. England, England takes over India and forces its culture on the Indian people. Uh, would be England culture because it is the dominant culture globally, uh, strikes out the other cultures in place. So digital imperialism would look like this, where we are, um, did, now I'm gonna, I'm gonna call out Americans right here, but it's not exclusively an American problem. Where we, America are, are being digital missionaries and are consciously or unconsciously pushing our national culture, our national agenda, our own cultural agenda, instead of recognizing there are cultural differences and, and, and giving people an opportunity to, to lean into their cultural difference. To me, it's one of the reasons why I don't want my face on a bunch of videos in Africa, training African digital missionaries. This is not the face of, of, I joke all the time. This is not the face of an Indian digital movement. You know, we need to find people in these cultures, Ebenezer and others, that, that can represent the, the movement globally. This is why it's not jeffreed.com. This is why it's the church digital and, and it's more about empowering others, which is very selfless, humble, things that Christ called us to be, act. That's digital imperialism. Digital culture is stronger than physical culture. How you act in different countries doesn't matter compared to how you act within the culture of a platform. TikTok is always TikTok regardless of whether you're in the Middle East or you're in, uh, America. Maybe some slight nuances within the platform, but the platform culture supersedes physical platform. That was a very long answer. Scott, thank you for being the guinea pig there. Um, or actually, well, it wasn't Scott, that was Methos. Methos, thank you for being the guinea pig there, asking that question. Scott, I, I apologize. Uh, Facebook is exporting digital imperialism. Yeah, you're not wrong. Alright, hey, let's move on. We got, we got other things I, I want to cover here. So, uh, the equipping library is next up. By the way, the church digital, um, I'm starting in, in a couple of weeks, podcast season twelve. I've done twelve seasons. I, I actually, I'm on episode three hundred and thirty, I think this is three hundred and thirty-eight, three hundred and thirty-nine. I'm, I'm, I'm getting old, yo. Um, but the next season is going to be equipping partners and empowering tools. We're gonna highlight a, a lot of ministries and, and, and partners that want to empower you to be digital missionaries and, and are providing tools and solutions and trainings and networking and, and where, where the people that we're working with and bringing into the conversation, I'm personally vetting towards this. And so Tuesdays, starting June third, Tuesdays, one PM Eastern, right here on T, on the church digital's YouTube channel. We're gonna be talking more about this and digging into it. So stay tuned there. But let's do this. We're gonna talk about ambassadors. So we talked about equipping. And I want to, I want to help you become digital missionaries, but I, I need your help. I need your help with something. I, 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 I need your help to help us translate the idea of the church digital out globally. Um, because A, cultural differences, a lot of people don't understand who, who we are at the physical level. And, and many of you are already doing that naturally, starting to, uh, help us, uh, multiply these ideas out globally. You know, Mr. Pete's chiming in here, Alabama. I, there's a lot that I don't understand about Alabama. Like I, I am not, uh, I'm not, I live in Miami, which is this, one of the southernmost points in America, I think, but I, I am not from the South at all. And, and so like culturally, we need people to, to help us, you know, represent some of these ideas out physically. But in addition to that, I'm asking for some help, for some people to help us stand before God and, 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 and help us spiritually represent, pray for, and come alongside the work that, that we're doing with the church digital. And so we're calling this group, the, the ambassadors. Now, here's the reality of, of what we are, we're looking for. We're looking for people. We're basing this on Matthew six. We're asking people to do three things. We're asking for, uh, a group of you to come alongside the church digital and pray for, uh, digital missionaries, a digital mission field, uh, the church digital. We're asking for you to pray daily for this. We're already doing this, by the way, uh, if you've been part of the, the, the ten-two movement. Uh, Matthew, was it? No, Luke ten-two, for the harvest is plentiful, the workers are few. And so the church dot digital slash pray has more information on this, but you know, Matthew six, but when you pray, go into your room and shut the door and pray to your father who is in secret, your father who sees in secret will reward you. It's a big part of, of the ambassador. We're asking for people once a month to fast. We're, we're looking at Matthew six eighteen, that your fasting may not be seen by others, but by your father, who once again is in secret. And your father who sees in secret will reward you. I'm pretty sure I copied and pasted. That's for the repetitive nature. I just caught that it kind of repeated there. And, and so we're asking, now, look, we're, we're not regulating what day or when or how. Uh, we'll, we'll send out some resources through the prayer, but also we'll send, send out some resources on the fasting. But our hope is to create the opportunity to ask for people to come alongside and, and be intercessory prayer for us through the church digital and to fast for us, uh, for, for the digital missionary movement at, at a global level. And, and then the third thing that I'm asking for, and, and listen, I, Jeff Reed, I'm asking this humbly. As, as humble as I can be in this moment, I am going to stop the music because I want to make sure I'm being humble when I'm saying this. I am asking fifty of you to give monthly to the church digital. To be honest, I don't care if it's fifty cents. Whatever the minimum transaction that the website will, will transact is what I'm looking for. Some of you globally, you know, you may have a nickel, uh, a US five cent piece that you contribute. Like to me, it is, it is not about the money value of what's coming out of this. I've actually told my leadership team by doing this, I'm okay losing money. But, but the reality is, is, you know, look at, uh, the scripture here, Matthew six, twenty twenty-one. Lay your, 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 lay up for yourselves treasures in heaven, for where your treasure is, there your heart is also. And, and I'm asking some of you, it's, it's a serious moment here. And it's a little painfully awkward because I just killed the music and I'll bring it back in a second. But with this serious moment, I'm, I'm asking some of you, um, to own the vision of, of what we're doing, to contribute to see it happen, not only investing yourself into the community like you've already been doing, investing yourself by equipping and training and others and, and doing the ministry that you're doing globally, but to be honest, in, investing some of yourself financially into this. And, and I am asking, and this isn't ask, I'm asking for you to do it monthly. On the website, the giving forms, there's, there's a monthly tab. You can switch it over. It's five bucks a month. Thank you for giving five bucks a month towards this. A cup of coffee at Starbucks if, if you're here in America and whatever that translates into at, at the global level. Here's where we're at. As ambassadors, your prayer is going to cover the work of what we're doing. The, the fasting that you're doing is going to sharpen the, the mission of what we're doing and, and help to make it more effective. And the giving, what you're doing is, it's going to fuel the future, uh, literally fuel the future of, of what the, the church digital is offering. That's a, a rather, uh, serious thing for us. We're gonna have some fun here in a second, but if you're interested in the ambassador program, uh, being a part of this, like I said, we're, we're, we're recruiting, we want to see fifty people. This is serious, y'all. Fifty people coming alongside us, praying daily for digital missionaries, the digital missionary field in the church digital, fasting once a month towards the mission that God has called us to do digitally and, and, and contributing something to the, the church digital. If you tell me, hey, you know what, Jeff, I'm already giving to XYZ, I'm giving money to, uh, missionary or a church planter. So that's what I'm doing instead of the church digital? Awesome. Fill it out. Let us know. That's great. Contribute something to a digital process. And if you're not doing anything or if your ministry is greatly benefiting as a result of the church digital, help us out. We, uh, we desperately need it. So more information at thechurch.digital/ambassadors. Okay. Let's get the music going again. Oh man, that's kind of a downer. What have I got else? Okay, little bit. Let's talk about the fun stuff. So there's this little thing, maybe you've heard of it. It's called the digital missionary conference, just a, a small little conference hosted online. Eleven hundred people showed up day of from eighty-some countries, fifteen hundred people globally registered for this thing and incredible conference held by all. Uh, it was exhausting. It was incredible. It was rewarding. It was frustrating. We literally broke the internet twice. Uh, but we heard you loud and clear. A lot of you had, literally, we did, we talked about it. We, we took feedback. We listened to what you were saying in, in the, in the communities. Um, some of you, uh, vocally, you know, ta, talking about it. Um, lots of wins, things to improve on. What, what I heard was you wanted more interaction. You wanted more, more time to connect with each other and you wanted more poignant is the word that's coming to mind, more focused topics. So here's what we're doing moving forward. I teased this on the, on my show a couple of times, but we're gonna be rolling out. Uh, there's, we're gonna do conference seasons two times a year. Spring, spring twenty-six, we will do a conference. I'm telling you right now. we will do a conference. I'm telling you right now, we're going to do a conference. And that conference is going to feel like the spring 25. Maybe it's a two day conference. We'll spread it out. We give some breathing room, but we're going to do the big global, everybody together type of conference. But what we're doing fall 25, it's, it's going to look a little different. Oh, I'm moving ahead of myself. Man, my, my camera is, is, is too quick to focus on my finger. I'm moving ahead of myself. We broke the internet. Right? Alter Live, God bless it, could not sustain, and they are not going to be able to sustain where this organization, where this conference is going. And so we're moving on. Na 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 na, na 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 na. Hey, hey, hey. Goodbye. All right. Alter Live, it was nice, but we, we, we got it. We got to go with something bigger. And so welcome to the new TCD platform, Hubalo. And so Hubalo is our online conference, our online event platform that we're going to be using for our online conferences. We'll actually, the next town hall, we're going to do in Hubalo to let some people get some exposure to it and to do a rough draft. We're going to probably do it weekend, August or early September, head into that. But so, hey, those of you who are like, Jeff, your, your, your conference platform didn't make it. Alter Live is fixing the situation. That being said, some of the feature set, I actually have produced a event in Hubalo in the past, and it's a much better experience than Alter Live. I don't want to be critical of Alter Live necessarily in this situation, but Hubalo offers a lot more depth of features, a lot more interaction, a lot more connection. It was, it's a, it's a, it's a pricey tool. Like I, I'm not going to lie, Hubalo will be the most expensive tool in our tech deck, in our tech stack. And so I did not want to roll the dice on Hubalo without going through Alter Live first to make sure there was demand. And y'all told me there was demand. 1100 people showed up day of, we freaking had people hacking our conference and watching it on YouTube directly, or you know, some crazy old guy showed it on big screen. I'm kidding, Mr. Pete, love you for that. But so the, the deal is, is that we're going to invest money into it. And Hubalo is going to be an incredible day of experience for our online conferences moving forward. And so that's coming up. But like I said, four, not one, not two, not three. Ow, that hurts a lot more than I thought it would. Not, there are going to be four conferences we are doing. And here, you've been waiting for this, right? Can I get, can I get like a drumroll? Do I have the drumroll? Crap, where'd I put the, my sound effects? I thought I had the sound effects somewhere on my screen. I can't see it. I had my drumroll sound effects and I can't, dang it. Boom, boom. Yeah. All right. All right. Good. Let's move on. I suddenly felt like Letterman there. Hey, here are the conferences we've got lined up. Wednesday, 9/24, European Digital Missionary Conference featuring digital ministry opportunities that's currently happening in Europe. We're working with Simon Dirks, Germany, German and European outpost, Mission Alliance towards that as well. And we will be doing that on TC's Hubalo. Time to be determined. 9/24, Wednesday, 9/24, September 24. Wednesday, 10/1, Gaming Digital Missionary Conference, featuring gaming streaming ministry opportunities globally. Leighton and Andy are working on that at this point, and we're going to be hosting that, not on TC's Hubalo account, going to be hosting it in Discord. I don't know that I've ever, I've never been a part of a digital conference in Discord. So it'll, it'll be interesting to see what the guys come up with on that one. But they're heading up the conference and looking forward to seeing that Wednesday, October 1st in there. And Wednesday, October 8th, Platforms as Places, discussing and applying missiology to different platforms across. Jason Morris and I are heading up that one. Jason's actually going to be speaking at that headline or opening up the conference. Y'all, just because that's the one that, just because that's the one that I've spent the most time getting my fingernails dirty on, getting my fingers on getting dirt under my fingernails. I am so excited about the October 8th Platforms as Places. I invited all the speakers yesterday. And so I'm already starting to hear some conversations and some questions back, but I'm going to really be excited to see that Wednesday, 10/8 conference come together about that. We'll be doing that one on Hubalo. But you know, I said that we're going to do four. And there's only three listed there. Some wise person is probably making that observation right now. The fourth one, to be determined. There, we're having a conversation right now with a ministry partner that we want to come on board with. And we're working through the details right now. Let's just say that. We will announce that one more thing in, in, in the weeks to come, maybe a couple of weeks out. But we are having, it's called a season, a, a conference season coming up here in fall 2025, where we will, the, the goal is that four sequential conferences online. Now, you know, it's funny, I was using the term micro conferences a little bit as I was talking about this, not to describe them as, as small in attendance, because actually I think they're going to be largely attended across the board. But in, but what we're aiming to do is to create very targeted content, very targeted trainings, very targeted breakouts, very targeted equipings. And at the time, as a matter of fact, some of these conferences, like I know, I was listening to some of the stuff that Andy and Leighton were working on for the gaming conference. And it actually challenged me to like, scratch what I was thinking and almost pivot towards how we were, we were doing things because they were creating this, this really incredible thread that's, that's going to help gaming missionaries and gaming churches really develop a focus. And they were so fine tuned with what they were doing, they made me kind of want to raise my standard and elevate that digitally. And so towards what we're doing, the platforms and places. So really, really excited about offering what will be, well, now it's the fourth one soon, but what will be four digital missionary conferences in the course of that. The conferences will be roughly four or five hours. There'll be plenty of, the other thing, like I said, we're going to open it up and let there be all sorts of conversation time. Hey, you know what? I just checked the time. I got one more thing. Oh, by the way, real quick, rank your excitement levels for this. Of the four conferences, I should have did that while I was stalling. Of the four conferences, there's only three listed there. Of the three conferences, which are the ones, which is the one you're most excited about? Go ahead and rank that. Let us know. We've got the Gaming Digital Missionary Summit. We've got the European Digital Missionary Summit. And then we've got the Platforms as Places. This is a unbiased ranking, and we will, we'll have it open, like I said, on the flip side for people to vote on. So excited to see that Platforms as Places. The other ones, like I don't want to demean the other ones. The Platforms as Places will be the one that's the most generic in this season. European is going to lean into the European culture. It's going to make a lot of sense for people not connected to digital, to European culture to attend it, but you're going to have to contextualize it into your culture, not just, you know, at the same level, somebody in Europe's contextualizing an American conference towards that. But Platforms as Places will be the most unique one there. All right. Hey, I know I'm going a little long. I appreciate that. Let me click through, fourth digital missionary talked about that. I got one more thing. Some of you old enough to remember Steve Jobs, one more thing. Yo, I got one more thing. You, you ready for this? I love the Sylvan. I'm going to call this out because it just popped up on my screen out of the corner of my eye. I think they are all hitting trending needs befitting for me. It's what we tried to do, man. We tried to find the trends. We tried to find the needs towards that Sylvan. That warms my heart, man. Thanks for, thanks for saying that and for seeing that. So I appreciate it. We got one more thing. You ready for this? This, I didn't hear in, in the, you know, conversations, a lot of the stuff that we're doing, like, you could feel it, you could see it, because people were talking about it. This one, let's be honest, coming in, there's a little stigma. There's a little, you know, we don't, we don't, we don't talk about this. And this is something that I, Jeff, founder of the church digital, I want to, I want to install and I want to change in our culture. I'm, 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 I'm okay if we lean into this. Are you ready? Here we go. The church digital is launching recovery groups. The church digital is launching Christ centered recovery groups. This is a, this is a, this is a big deal for me, of somebody at a personal level who is, who has gone through recovery, who is currently going through recovery. And I'm willing to share my story with anyone individually. I'm not going to do it right now and have time. But as, as I look at a lot of the challenges and the ways that I have been personally taxed and struggled in doing mission, digital missions work with the opportunities of, of, you know, I've talked about this all the time. We're doing ministry in addictive spaces. We are recruiting volunteers to do ministry in addictive spaces, and we're dealing with people with a high level of addictiveness. If we are going to shine the light in the darkness that is digital space, we've got to be prepared to shine that light a little bit on ourselves and be transparent, be humble, be open to work through this. There's such a need, as, as I look across the board, there is such a, there was a, a guy yesterday that just out of nowhere said something in a Discord or WhatsApp, and I'm DMing after the fact. And he's just a broken individual who's doing ministry in digital spaces, and he's just bankrupt. It doesn't have to be about addictive, but there's this, this, this need that we as a people, we as a network, we as a culture, we as missionaries in the space, that we have to be comfortable addressing. We're launching, we, the church digital are launching Christ centered recovery groups because recovery isn't just for addicts. It's for the anxious, overwhelmed, and silently struggling. Digital missionaries and leaders often carry hidden wounds from isolation, burnout, and dysfunction. Ministry in digital spaces demand emotionally healthy disciples. We're partnering with an organization called Project Exodus. They're based out of South Africa. If you've heard of Project Exodus before, bad one, that's not these people. It's not these people. There's multiple Project Exodus's. We're partnering with Project Exodus that gives us powerful tools that provide healing and transformation. This is not about restoration. This is about restoration, not labels. It's about freedom in providing that for, for everyone that's in this space. This is, I think, the biggest thing that we're going to do. I love the equipping library. I love core. I love, you know, let's do 25 digital missionary conferences. That's great. This right here, this is an incredible opportunity for us to be real with ourselves in a safe and protected space. Like these conversations, this is the reason we brought Stacy on. This is the reason we're working with L. Michelle and others at the chaplain level, because we want to create safe spaces for people like you to work through some of the baggage that you're carrying on. For me, 25, 30 years on some of this stuff? Once again, I'll tell you my story if you want. I'm happy to separately. We're betaing these groups. We're working with Project Exodus. We're adapting their framework. We're bringing it into the church digital. We're contextualizing it for digital and virtual. To be honest, I'm looking for guinea pigs. I'm looking for people that are willing to beta this group. I actually have no idea if this link works. I'm going to put this link up, and if somebody can go into chat and test it real quick, the church dot digital slash recovery. I am not sure that that link got created, so I'm going to like type real quick. Yes, it did get redirected. Good. So the church dot digital slash recovery, I'm telling you, Barbara's team's good. Even with the last minute stuff, I forgot to get a confirmation. The church digital slash recovery, this form, this information, just goes to myself and Stacy. And so as me as founder, Stacy as chaplain, where the project Exodus certifies the trainers, we're looking for people that are interested in facilitating these conversations, as well as for people that are looking to lead these conversations. If you're struggling with some of these things, you don't have to. If you're burning yourself out, if you're running on empty, if you're starting to question your faith, if you're struggling with addictive sin, and you don't have a safe space, a private space to go to. That's why we're here. And so for more information, feel free to hit me up directly. Go through the church dot digital slash recovery. Let us know your information. And these groups will be of the utmost privacy going through. This is not therapy. This is recovery. And there's two completely different things going through that. And so, hey, that's, I think that's what we're going to land on. Questions. Okay. Hey, look, so here's what you can do. Well, here's what I'm going to do. I went a little long, seven minutes. Beginning took a while to kind of get through all those slides. Had a lot of good stuff up in there. So if you gotta go, I appreciate it. Go. If you want to stick around, keep involved in the conversation, I'm going to roll through some of these questions. And if you have other questions, feel free to dump them in chat or dump them through the QR code. I'll throw the QR code on the screen as well. And so you can dig into it there. How can we make EDM even better? That is a great question. I would say, let's, you know, shorter, I think is key. By the way, when we go to the shorter, we're also going to go not just shorter, but shorter and longer and, and the 10 weeks. So basically, your outpost leader has the option of a five week or a 10 week, depending upon his or her audience in their context. Because what we, what we really want to do is create resources that can be contextualized. But the, there's no way we can create a five week or a 10 week, or even a 13 week, that covers all of the contextualizations, that covers all of the different ways to do it digitally. And rather than trying to boil it down and simplify it down, that's why the library is so important. We're going to get more into this here in a little bit. I'm going to go to the, the next slide because that's, that's, that's going to be good. Next question. How can I help? Oh my gosh, there's so many different ways. I lost, you lost my question. Micah, what was your question? Was it the YouTube? Okay, hold on. I did. I'm sorry, my friend. Show question. I did. I, I clicked, answered accidentally. I see it now. What is our strat, what is, what is our strategy with TC's YouTube channel? How do we measure success? Yeah. Thank you, Micah. That's a great question. The strategy is constantly evolving. Right now, the strategy was a lot of meat. And well, the strategy was multiple things, but then we pivoted to missionary, equipping and mobilizing missionaries. It was a lot of meat. Like I said, I, and so we're now platforming Leighton on the gaming space. And so he's coming on and doing some stuff in Twitch and gaming. It is my goal to get other voices in there from a, I am, like one of, one of my side hustles right now, I'm, I'm working on a women's show. Like, you know, we've got a lot of really qualified, very talented, very gifted women that are hanging around the church digital. Like I could just rattle off seven or eight names right now of people that are digital missionaries in this space, that are very talented communicators. And I've often thought about, oh my gosh, what if we did like a digital missionary panel, like, you know, the view or something like that, get a bunch of women, feisty women on a, on a panel show every, every two weeks or whenever, just, you know, going off and stuff. At the end, we want to get to the place where we're platforming more voices. Now, even at a global level, like I would love to see Simon start to do stuff and Yatope and, you know, Tariq to start the platform. This is some of where we're going. So we can start the platform, global culture within our YouTube channel. I, for, for us, YouTube is part of that connection level that feeds into community. And so we want to make sure that, and a lot of people I've met on YouTube, or I've found this on YouTube, and have joined this in community. and have joined to say in community. Steve Reed's actually example of that recently. A lot of you know Steve. Steve found us maybe two months ago in YouTube and, and, you know, has hung around with us a lot in, in, in the community level. And so that's how that is. With anything at the connection level, I mean, look, I've got, we've got like 1,200 subscribers. I'm really excited about that. Um, I, I, I wish we had more, but I don't really celebrate anything at the connection level. I celebrate it at the community. I'm far, far more excited. We've got 500 in YouTube. Pretty active community. We've got almost 700 in WhatsApp. Or I'm sorry, I said 500 in WhatsApp. Pretty active community. We got almost 700 in Discord. I'm far more excited about that than I am YouTube subscribers or Facebook followers or things like that. Connection is vanity metrics. Connection has to feed to community, whether it's physical community or digital community. If you're doing a physical church and you've got 1.5 million Facebook followers and you get 100 people showing up at your church on Sunday and you're not discipling people digitally, you're not creating digital community for them to engage in, there's a problem. Like that's a very extreme level, but it's not, the connection metrics don't mean crap. It's however you get people into community. That, that next level, that is, is what you, you really start to celebrate on. Oh, wrong button. Um, sorry about the confusion there. I marked as answered. How are the strategy teams organized and who is responsible for those who are not very familiar with the Church Digital? Yeah, it's a long question. Um, connect community, quit mobilize. We've got a connection director. Barb, uh, so I'm founder. I answer to a board. But with the framework, Barbara is our connections director. So she's responsible for social media. She's responsible for communication. She's responsible for the, the top funnel. Community is Andy. Uh, Jason is equipping and mobilization is me at this point. We don't really have a mobilization director at this point. And, and so, but that's the structure. We've got outposts. Outposts are decentralized networks that operate alongside the Church Digital, but independent. So we've got like Leighton and Gaming and, and Simon in Germany and Yatope and, um, Africa and Sub-Saharan South Africa. And then we've got Tariq in Middle East and some others. And so I say they're decentralized because, and we work alongside them because they don't answer to me. You know, Simon says, hey, you know what? I'm gonna start an EDM this month. Awesome. Simon says, hey, you know what? I'm gonna skip this round of EDM. Awesome. Simon says, hey, I'm gonna, Simon says, I'm getting kind of a joke here. But like, he's got freedom to, to do what he wants with it. For me, the win is how can I help Simon do what he wants to do? And Simon, as an example, Simon says to me, Jeff, I want to do a digital missionary conference. Can the Church Digital help? Yes, please. Here comes the European Digital Missionary Conference. Simon's like, hey, I'm doing this conference and it might make sense for you to come out. I'd love to go to Poland in 2026. Let's do it. How does it make sense? And, you know, can you slap my name around and get you the ability to speak at the conference? Since you're connected with the Church Digital, how can we help? How can we magnify that? Many of you are, are interested in, in expanding your reach, not just to be missionaries, but to start to help change the digital culture in your context. We would call those outpost leaders. That's what Simon and Yatope and some of that is. And so we would love, I would love to explore that, that with you as we're walking through it. How can we make EDM even better? Right now it's all about contextualizing it and adapting it in those languages and, and seeing it replicated in different cultures. That's what I'm, I'm hoping to do. By the way, the outposts, they have freedom. You know, if they're like, hey, I want to cut this section. I want to add this stuff. This doesn't work in, in our region. Instead we're gonna, I want to create this video myself. Like it's, you know, uh, it's open source. I would, the closest thing to it, Jason Morris's language, EDM is open sourced. And so the outpost leaders, we, we make the Church Digital mix recommendations. And then the outpost leaders have freedom to adjust that as they want to. All, all that we ask is that if they create content, if for their context, that content is then available to the Church Digital to give to others. For example, Simon, um, gets his, his EDM translated into German subtitles. And so we have that resource. It's on the Church Digital channel. And if, I don't know, somebody else in Germany wants to lead an EDM, but doesn't want to do it through Simon, for whatever reason, the resource is available for, for that person to do that. And so, you know, I don't know if, you know, somebody came in from, I don't, I don't have a good example in German towards that. But, you know, if somebody wanted the French version to do something in, in, down in, uh, French Guiana or that range, but not, uh, Europe, it was a separate deal. If we have, well, actually we're talking about French soon, but that would be an example of, of using the resource that's available. Cool. All right. Good there. Uh, how can I help? We don't have a clear way. We need your help, uh, in, in a big way. We don't have, um, a, a clear front door. It's maybe one of the things we need to work on, uh, for volunteering. I think now in 2025, I think there's more clarity on the positions and the roles and the needs. So we may make that clear. What I would say is if you want to help, if you want to, uh, serve, if you want to volunteer, you need to connect with me directly. And the best way to do that is to schedule a call with me. And so I'm gonna go ahead and put this up on the screen. Dearfedge.com. That is my name, Jeffrey backwards. That's my social media handle. If you've ever seen that, be like, what's that guy smoking? It's just Jeffrey backwards. And, uh, and so feel free to go to that link. It links to my calendar. You can grab time with me and let's, let's have a conversation. I, I will learn what you're doing and try to help you connect with the, the right person, whether it's Barbara, Andy, Leighton, Stacy, uh, myself, JMo, like Ian. It's, it's, we move very fast and it's a very agile group. And so right now it's, it's kind of weaves in and out in some different areas. So go through me and I'll help you get connected. DM me directly. You know how to reach me on the communities or dearfedge.com to book time with me. Cool. All right. How can I help? That one is done. Uh, listen, we need, we need, we have. My gut is that we probably have 35 active volunteers that are contributing at some level of the Church Digital. And, and even the people that are not volunteers that are paid, to be honest, they might as well be volunteers for paying them so little. That's at some point, I haven't told leadership this, but I want, this is a conversation. But at some point soon, I think I want to like, uh, actually publicly announce what everybody's making. Like it is, it is so ridiculously small how much money people are making off the Church Digital. It is amazing how effective we are as an organization at the global level off the, and this is not a reason to give. That's not why I'm going down this road, but it's phenomenal. You know, people are like, I need a million dollars to be effective digital missionary. I need to build that studio. I need that new camera. I need, I need, I need, you don't need jack. It is, it is so easy to, to, it's, it's hard work, but it can totally be done with, with pennies. I, I remember like there were seasons with the Church Digital that, that we were on a budget freeze. I think all our expenses were less than Andy would know, a thousand, $1,500 a month was all we were spending. Amazing. Like it's just, you can read, be global very quickly. Okay. Uh, how can I help? Thank you for asking. I always love when people ask that question. I know the focus has shifted. This is a good one. There was, I saw this one. This came in today and, uh, I, I actually, I copied Andy, copied and pasted Andy on it. And I was like, this is a problem. This, we have, we, we, we walked away from this and this is, this is a valid issue. I know the focus has shifted to missions. However, there, there are, there's still resources for digital churches. So first off, in my mind, a digital church planter is not that different than a digital missionary. We talk about digital missionary, like nor, most, for the most part, digital missionaries, the framework, connect community, quit mobilize. A, a digital missionary typically is, is only gonna handle one or two of those on their own, and then will partner with people for the rest. A digital church planter, I would change that. You need to be to all four. And so a, a digital planter usually has a large team, whereas a digital missionary may just have a smaller team or is an individual that's working closely with a network of other people outside. So there's some similarities maybe in the model of, of that, uh, which I appreciate. The, the importance for this is that we really lost that voice. I mean, pre-digital missionary, we were, pre-COVID, I was maybe the voice, the only voice for digital church planting, pre-COVID. I mean, this is before Mark was, I'm, I'm even just trying to think. Mark hadn't even launched because I helped Mark launch through Stadia. I mean, there was like Angela Craig Pursue Church Live, DJ Soto VR Church. Pastor Dee was doing her thing, House of His Glory. Roblox, Robloxian Christians, Daniel Heron. Is that it? I'm not counting like Second Life, Life Church. That's a physical church doing digital. But digital only planting, uh, you're probably on one hand, you could count the number of churches that, that were doing that pre-COVID. And, um, we need to get back to the place where we're, we're providing some support for that. Now, what I would call that, uh, in the Church Digital language, and, and I want to invite people to do this. We're gonna do this more formally in the fall. Barbara, if you're watching, thank you. Sorry. But in the fall, we're, we're, we're in the spring, in the summer, I'm gonna use the right language. Sometime this summer, we're gonna run a campaign. And, and we want to, we want to start to collect some information because there are holes in the Church Digital. There are small pockets of people that are passionate about an idea. And, and we almost want to do like matchmaker of sorts and try to connect people together. Like this, I've got a guy that's interested. Nah, I'm member Directory Judy. I don't know that I want to go there. But maybe, uh, maybe we need to update our database a little better. Actually, that's not a bad idea, Judy. Thank you for saying that. There are people that are, that are planted at church digitally. And, and we want to formally get them together and, and create a digital outpost for them where they can encourage each other, where they can talk about exploring different techniques, experimenting with different ideas, uh, explore different ideas, experiment with different techniques and, uh, and be empowered to do ministry by what's happening there. It's, uh, these are peer-to-peer supports and, and the ability to create, the ability to, to funnel resources, uh, happen through the outpost. A lot of our equipping happens through the outpost and it's that, that peer-to-peer community that exists. And, and we, the Church Digital, we need to create one for, uh, church planters. I'm, I'm actually doing that. I'm creating an outpost for physical churches that want to create a, a digital missionary framework in, in their church. That's just an example of like a subgroup that I'm creating as an outpost. And we need to find somebody that's wanting to do that, uh, for digital churches. So if you are interested in, um, planting a digital church or you've planted a digital church and, and you're interested in connecting together, uh, with other digital church planters, reach out to me. We'll, we'll make some formal and informal introductions and, and see if we can't get a, a network, a peer-to-peer group created out of that. This is, uh, Paul. Maybe this is something our micro churches podcast can work on organizing resources for digital churches, church planting. Yeah, Paul, I would, we're launching a micro churches, um, network outpost with, um, uh, Micah Bales is actually leading it. If that's what you're talking about, I, I don't, the similarity between, um, I don't know. We'd have to talk about it. See who, who actually shows up. If it's digital churches that are operating the micro model, well, we need to get you connected with Micah. If it's digital churches that are doing anything other than the micro church model, which there's plenty of other models. If it's gaming, gets you connected to Leighton. If it's micro, gets you connected to, um, Micah. If it's something else, that's where I think there's a, a temporary hole. Maybe we need to isolate and start to create some others. Yeah, it's a great question. I want to thank whoever said this because what it literally did was it exposed, hey, there's a problem. There's something that you have not thought of and, um, not dealt with. And we wanted to do that. Feedback's important. I, I really do, I can close this. Feedback's important. If you are not, if you're not listening to the people around you, you're gonna find that eventually they don't have anything to say. And, um, I never wanted to be accused of being that type of person. Leadership, the people around me, this community is, is, has made us better. I mean, you all have heard me say, we were not, you know, at some level, we were not planning on being a digital missionary sending agency. It wasn't until we actually looked around and, um, we were not surrounded by church planters, just surrounded by missionaries. It's like, well, crap, we gotta, we gotta pivot. And so, and when you're doing digital mission work, it's, it's one thing to, to, Henry Blockaby says, there's four or five different ways that the Holy Spirit can speak. Holy Spirit speaks through, um, you know, audibly speaks through, he speaks through scripture. He speaks through, um, through, through prayer. Uh, Holy Spirit speaks through, um, the voice of others. And it's one thing to say, oh, I'm really called to do X. And all the people around you aren't interested in that, but they're interested in something completely different. Maybe, maybe you're called to X, but maybe God wants you to explore Y. And, uh, so be sensitive to, to who your audience is. Cause it's hard to build an audience. And if you have an audience that's doing a different direction, that's, you know, worth looking into. I'm just gonna be sensitive here. I mean, to me, this is one of the reasons that it was so hard for me to pivot towards digital missionaries. Cause at the time, it was probably 50/50 digital missionaries and, and physical churches doing digital ministry. And, and I fought Barbara. I fought is the right word. You can ask any of them. I fought Barbara for months against this idea, years actually, before Shikimi even came on board. Going all the way back to 23. I can remember sitting in a, in a, in a bar in Orlando with Barbara and a handful of other people. Uh, yeah, 2023, taught at, at Expo Conference. And, and she was challenging me to simplify. And I'm like, no, I want to have my cake and eat it too. Like I, I can't, I can't choose. It's, it's, it's both sides. And, um, we, I would just tell you, uh, choosing and changing for us, I, not one regret. Not one regret. The, the hole that we left was the digital church planter, which was exposed today. Digital churches, physical, digital churches, planting, yeah, we need to step into that. Physical churches, if you are serious about, it's so funny. I've, uh, I had a, had a call this week. I don't remember, I don't remember the guy's name. And so you may be on watching this. If you are, I'm sorry. But, um, I had a call with a guy who was interested in, um, you know, I put a thing in Discord and WhatsApp. Hey, if your physical church is doing digital and you're interested in launching a digital missionary, whatever, let me know. And, um, you know, right off the bat, when I get like, uh, I'm gonna be very judgmental when I say this. But when I get a social media manager conversation or, you know, somebody that's a, uh, a media director, I'm like, this is, this, this is not gonna go the way because the church is not staffing the right, is not staffing a person in that role. They're not gonna, they're not gonna skip it. And this one guy that I was talking to, he was very excited. He was very excited about what I was talking about towards being a, you know, creating a digital missionary outpost and really installing a framework in the church. But I asked him, I was like, okay, well, you're excited. Is your leadership excited? Would, would your lead pastor be excited? And he's like, oh, absolutely not. There is no way we would ever do anything like this here. Okay. You know, what, what do you feel called to do? Are you in, in the right place? Are you an obstacle? Is there something God is calling you to do? I can't answer these questions. You, you can. So there's, there's tensions there, which I'm getting. I have no idea how I got on that tangent. Hey, you know what? It's been a whopping 90 minutes and this has been a lot of fun. I have appreciated hanging out with you and anybody else that's left after the 90, uh, minute, minute roll here. But yeah, we're gonna wrap up here. Anybody else got anything they want to say? Bueller? Bueller, Bueller, Bueller. I think we're good. I'm tired. It's been a long day. I'm gonna wrap. So, hey, thanks everybody for coming out. Uh, next week, I'll do a tease. Next week, I, I got confirmation this morning and lined it up here, uh, was it May 27th, 1:00 PM Eastern? I'm doing an interview, uh, with Jose. Oh my gosh, Jose, how do I pronounce your last name? De, De Kitty, De Kitty. Jose De Kitty is, who's Jose De Kitty? He's the guy that's been working with Vatican, with, uh, the old pope and now the new pope on, on defining what, uh, digital missionaries looks like in, in the Catholic denomination. And so very excited to have this conversation. Jose and I have been talking on the side through some things, but looking forward to getting a conversation with Jose De Kitty next week and talking about, uh, his new boss at the Vatican, uh, and American and, uh, exploring and redefining even what digital missionaries looks like within the Catholic denomination. And so until next week, this is Jeff with the Church Digital. Swing by thechurchdigital/poll. I'll open it up here in a couple of questions. If anybody else wants to contribute stories or ideas, uh, we would love that. But, uh, we'll see you next time here with the Church Digital Podcast. Y'all have a good one.